And the prayer. And I'm gonna ask Councilman Riley to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Diggs, will you please lead us in prayer?
I hope your day was filled with laughter and may your evening be filled with love. And I pray this evening for peace, health, and happiness. Thanks so much for having our brave friend Mary Tysholz here with us this evening. Watch over our servicemen and women, and please bring them all home safely. May the freshness of the Holy Spirit rest in each of your thoughts, rule in your dreams tonight, and conquer your fears. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Will the clerk please call her all?
McMahon, Negerschaff, Johnson, Trombetta, Caladrino, Perkins, Descanti, Shinise, Esposito, Sadi, Cavo, Basso, Rotello, Tigs, Tysholz, Curran, Riley, Saraceno, Seaberry, Stanley, Taber Sack.
Okay. There being eighteen present, three absent. Uh, will the record please reflect that Councilman Perkins is out of state on a family business? Councilman Negerschaff is out of state on family business. Uh, Councilwoman Stanley is at a family event. Um, and that pretty much covers our absences this evening. The first thirty minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. I ask any member of the council, or any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening, uh, please do so regarding an item that is specifically on the agenda. And as always, you must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the City of Danbury, uh, to speak to the council. With that, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Sir? Uh, Rick, 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 we had that for a reason.
It's a new deal? Am I gonna have to go over there if I answer questions?
Yes, sir.
I apologize. I'm a newcomer.
Hello. Hello. My name is Andy Messer. I live on sixty-five Garfield Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut. Um, I'm here on item number twenty-two, which is a noise ordinance section. And I'm curious to know if, um, we can address barking dogs, uh, not early in the morning, but specifically throughout the day, and how I get that enforced properly, effectively, efficiently. And, um, there's a, there's a statute twenty-two dash three-six-three, a nuisance law, uh, basically indicating, uh, long-term barking, um, in the me, in the immediate vicinity of a sick person, um, that person who owns a dog, uh, can and may be fined up to a hundred dollars on the first offense, and, uh, the court or judge may make other matters, uh, of the removal of the dog from the property. So it's, it's specifically addressing twenty-two dash three-six-three, uh, under item number twenty-two tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. I'm gonna refer you to Mr. Antos, uh, who's late to go outside and get some information from you, uh, regarding address, and then we will refer that to our animal control officer, along with the unified neighborhood inspection team, see if we can get some movement on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Antos. Any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening? Mrs. Reynolds, come on. You're a woman of grace and charm and dignity, and you deserve the respect. Sure. Mrs. Reynolds, could you, could you go over and just, what did you do to Mrs. Reynolds?
Item twenty-two, uh, twenty-eight, um, what acquisition and what property is that on New Street?
Um, that is the-
Is that AT&amp;T?
Yes.
And you're purchasing it for the firemen?
I'd like to not to be able to share that, 'cause we are in negotiations, but-
Oh, okay.
That's the general idea. You kinda caught us.
The reason I say is they really need it. Uh, I see them every single day. They're so crowded, I don't know how they get in and out. And one more thing, the reason they see me is because now I'm gonna have problems, but I'm gonna ask Saint Francis to help me out. For years, I've been feeding furrow cats in three different areas of Danbury, and always I get down to the area in back of, you know, AT&amp;T. And the management of AT&amp;T has been wonderful to me. Several times, drivers have given me food and executives, and it's been wonderful, but I'll just have to either put them down, or I'll make some arrangements.
We'll, uh, we'll work with you on that.
Oh, no, but I just want you to know that they really need it, the firemen. And thank you for allowing me to speak, everybody.
Hi, Mrs. Reynolds. Okay, I, uh, thank you. Any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening? Mr. Webber?
Good evening. I'm Andrew Webber of one-seventeen Great Plain Road. I just wanted to speak to you about item number two, uh, Taylor's Farm. Uh, I think it'd be a great idea if the city, uh, worked with Don Taylor to maybe purchase the property. Uh, it's a great piece of farmland that goes back many, many years here in Danbury, and uh, love to see more open space be conserved here in Danbury. And Taylor's Farm would be great, uh, any place, perhaps even for a, a public garden, uh, which we could use here in Danbury, or even just to keep it open, 'cause I would hate to see that, uh, wonderful piece of farmland go to developers. So, uh, whatever you can do, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Webber? Andrew Webber, you address, Andrew?
Uh, one-seventeen Great Plain Road.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening? Seeing none, then we'll move on with our regular items on the agenda. Mr. President, the minutes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the City Clerk's office.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes as presented? Mr. Cavo?
Your Honor, thank you. It was brought to my attention today that in the July minutes, there was a clerical error on the count of a motion passing eighteen to two. It should've been sixteen to two, um, on item number thirty-five, uh, ad hoc, ad hoc report and resolution, Charter Revision Commission.
Okay. Um, seeing that, we'll make a typographical change in the minutes, and the final copy that will be posted on the city website. Any other additions, corrections, deletions to the minutes as presented? Mr. Cavo?
Your Honor, thank you. It was brought to my attention today that in the July minutes, there was a clerical error on the count of a motion passing eighteen to two. It should've been sixteen to two, um, on item number thirty-five, uh, ad hoc, ad hoc report and resolution, Charter Revision Commission.
Okay. Um, seeing that, we'll make a typographical change in the minutes, and the final copy that will be posted on the city website. Any other additions, corrections, deletions to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Uh, Madam Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent calendar is the August seventh, two thousand and seven. One, receive the report and confirm the appointments of Dominic A. Sotero, Jr., and Samuel F. Jacobellis as members of the Richter Park Authority with a term to expire February first, two thousand and nine, and to confirm the appointment of Frank J. Russo, Sr., as an alternate member of the Richter Park Authority with a term to expire on February first, two thousand and ten. Seven, receive the communication and approve the expenditure of funds from the Public Health Preparedness Grant for meals at the required training. Eight, receive the communication and approve the reappropriation of described funds to complete last year's projects and pay outside, outstanding equipment purchase orders. Twelve, receive the communication and authorize the Office of Corporation Counsel to acquire the easement described therein. Thirteen, receive the communication and authorize the City of Danbury Department of Health, Housing, Welfare WIC program to apply for and accept funding from the March of Dimes for outreach programs in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Fourteen, receive the communication and approve the resolution authorizing the City of Danbury Fire Department to apply for and accept fundings from the Savings Bank of Danbury Foundation in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. Fifteen, receive the communication and approve the resolution authorizing the City of Danbury Police Department to accept additional funds from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for the two thousand and seven DUI Expanded Grant. Twenty, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Twenty-four, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Twenty-five, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Move that we, uh, we accept the consent calendar?
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Caladrino. Any discussion about the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item two, please.
Communication, Taylor Farm Conservation Easement. Dear common council members, over the last several months, we've been exploring ways to ensure the permanent preservation of the Taylor Farm in the Great Plain District of Danbury, one of the last remaining examples of our local agricultural heritage. As you know, Don Taylor has offered to give the city a conservation easement covering the farm if a fair price could be agreed upon. Since the council last discussed this proposal, the General Assembly has expanded the existing open space grant program under the Department of Environmental Protection, and also created an agricultural land acquisition loan program under the purview of the Commissioner of Agriculture. Please authorize my office to apply for any grant or loan funds that may be available under either of these programs, so that we may preserve the Taylor Farm for future generations to enjoy. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
It's your pleasure, Councilman Cavo.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize your office to apply for any grant or loan funding that may be available to preserve the open space here at the Taylor Farm. And I'd like to just say thank you to Mr. Taylor, and, uh, for his offer to the city, and, uh, look forward to getting our ad hoc committee finished up with an agreement, and get it out here and get it, uh, get the conservation easement in place. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Seaberry. Uh, any discussion? Sorry, Mr. Descanti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, one question. Uh, according to this, the way it's read, and I'm sorry, the way it is written, is this strictly for the, uh, Taylor Farm only, and no other open space preservation?
Let me just take a step back and explain the, uh, program. The statute is silent on whether or not we can get a grant to do a conservation easement. What I'm asking the council tonight is to let me approach the Commissioner of Agriculture to get a loan to, to purchase the easement. Um, that's gonna be, gonna require some discussion, negotiation between us, the city, and between the state of Connecticut. Um, it does not bind us, uh, to purchasing Taylor Family Farm or the easement, but what, we wouldn't get it unless we have a very site-specific application. At some point, we'll have to formalize that application, bring it forward to them, once we've agreed upon a negotiated price with the ad hoc committee, and it's brought back to the council. So, um, the answer to your question is, uh, it would be a site-specific grant, but I just want permission to approach them at this point and say, "We've got this idea, we've got this property. Can we use your loan program to purchase a conservation easement versus an outright purchase of the property?"
Follow, if I may. Um, there is still an ad hoc committee out on this. We would be, have a chance to meet again and discuss this?
Yeah, what, just to give you an update on where we are in the whole process, I would say, and I know Don Taylor's here from, from the farm, I would say we're about fifty percent through the negotiations. Once we come to a consensus, Mr. Taylor, the city, I'll bring that agreement to the ad hoc, which we hope to meet at some point in September. Um, in the meantime, I'll, if permission's given tonight, I'll have ongoing conversations with the state about funding this, whatever price that we bring. The ad hoc will look at it, I'll walk them through the, the negotiated agreement. If they, it is their, under their purview, if they so agree, they'll give it a positive recommendation, they'll come back on the agenda in September for the council as a whole to discuss, and then we can make a final decision. Uh, so this is a very preliminary approach that I'm gonna make to the state.
Thank you.
Further discussions? Mrs. Taber Sack?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I'm curious as to why, uh, the request isn't accompanied by a resolution, as item fourteen is this evening, since you are requesting permission to apply for grants or loans?
Um, we discussed that in the Corporation Counsel's office, but at this time, we'd, you know, uh, Mr. Pinter really believed that we didn't need a formal resolution. We're not making a specific application at this point. Uh, not until we have a negotiated price and approval from the ad hoc and from the council, uh, as a whole. Uh, this is just gonna give me permission to approach the state, present the idea to them, and see if they're interested in, in pursuing this further for a conservation Further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Uh, Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Communication, donation to the Danbury Emergency Shelter. To the Mayor, Mark Bowden, and the common council, the City of Danbury's Emergency Shelter received a generous donation of personal items and toiletries from Pauline Nelson and staff of care of Macy's Men's Department, Seventh Bakers Avenue, Danbury. I'm requesting that this common council accept this sincere and generous donation. Sincerely, Amy H. Budnick, Director of Welfare.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the generous donations on behalf of the Danbury Emergency Shelter, and send appropriate letters of thanks.
Second. Which were made and seconded by Councilwoman Tysholz. Is there any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Uh, Madam Clerk, item four, please.
Communication, donation to the Department of Elderly Services. Dear Mayor Bowden and members of the common council, the Department of Elderly Services has received the following donations for the performances by both the cellmates, which is the Senior Center Band and the Senior Center Chorus from the following: Fallows at twenty-five, Town in the Middle for twenty-five, Village of Brookfield Common, fifty, The Gardens, twenty-five. Please accept these donations and transfers above one hundred and twenty-five into line item five zero zero two dash five three one one, Professional Services. Thank you. Respectfully, Susan M. Temanio, Director of Elderly Services.
It's your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to receive the communication and accept the donations, uh, send the appropriate line item, and send the letter of thanks.
Second.
Which were made and seconded by Councilwoman McMahon. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item five, please.
Communication, donation of an American Liberty Elm Tree. Dear Mayor Bowden and members of the council, Bartlett Tree Experts of Danbury has donated an American Liberty Elm Tree in celebration of their hundredth anniversary. We would like to plant this tree in Rogers Park at the site of the Veterans Building. The approximate value of the tree is five hundred and ninety-five dollars. I request that this generous donation be accepted at the next ca, meeting of the common council. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me directly. Sincerely, Antonio Idarola, Director of Public Works.
It's your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Caladrino?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donation of the tree, and send an appropriate thank you letter.
Second. Which were made and seconded by Councilman Trombetta. Is there any discussion about the donation of the tree? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Uh, Madam Clerk, item six, please.
Donation to the Police Department. Dear members of the council and Mayor Mark D. Bowden, permission is requested to accept the donation of five thousand dollars from GE Capital Solutions for use in providing the Danbury Police Department personnel with training and development. Attached is a letter from Elizabeth Goring, Corporate Citizenship Manager at GE Capital Solutions, explaining this donation in greater detail. Uh, it's from Alan D. Baker, Chief of Police.
It's your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Trombetta?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication, accept the generous donation of five thousand dollars from GE Capital Solutions, and we'd like to send a letter of thanks to the appropriate sources. Thank you.
Which were made and seconded by Councilman Shinise. Any discussion about the, uh, donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Items seven and eight were consent. Uh, Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
Communication, Danbury Municipal Airport, Acquisition of Property, Funding of Acquisitions, and Consultant Fees. Dear Mayor and Council, in April and July two thousand and seven, respectively, Grinnier and Worcester, uh, at all, you authorized the acquisition of several parcels of property adjacent to the airport for purposes of maintaining adequate runway approach zone clearance, together with such additional and accessory costs as may be required to do so. Among the elements permitting the proper completion of this process was the commissioning and preparation of a set of appraisals for all properties involved. The appraisals have now been completed, and the city's consultant, HTA Associates Incorporated, together with others, needs to process the information and proceed with steps necessary to speedily acquire the properties. In order to proceed, we need to ask you to authorize the expenditure of up to three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars that will include the balance of the cost of the property acquisitions, as well as ongoing consultant costs as described. The ongoing consultant and related costs for the next phase are estimated at fifty thousand. As we had indicated to you in earlier correspondence, it is fully expected that most of the funds requested and expended for purposes of the runway project will be reimbursed to the city once HTA and the airport administrator file grant applications with the FAA for such reimbursement. Unfortunately, that can occur, in this case, only subsequent to securing the funding for those, at, for these acquisitions. Therefore, and based on the above, kindly consider approving the expenditure of these funds, subject to necessary certification, in order that this process to safeguard and approve the airport may proceed in a timely fashion. Please do not hesitate to call this office in the event you have any questions. Very truly yours, Lazel L. Pinter, Deputy Corporation Counsel.
It's your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and authorize an expenditure of up to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for property acquisitions, along with an estimated fifty thousand dollars for an ongoing consultant, uh, costs.
Second.
Three hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Three hundred and twenty-one, right. Motion has been made and seconded by Councilman Bassett. Is there any discussion? Councilman Shinise?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess to the, to finance director, um, what line item would the funds be drawn out?
Say hello there?
The line items, uh, Your Honor, would be taken out of, it would be handled similar to a capital project. At the, at the point that we're ready to start expending some real dollars in this, we'd be able to recognize a revenue for this, and then we'd be able to start, um, hitting against that line item. So it would be handled similar to a capital project.
It would be a capital project?
We would set up a capital project to deal with this kind of, uh, project. We have not expended any real money for this yet, uh, but we will be very soon. And at that point, we'll be in a position where we'll apply for funds, uh, to the FAA grant. We don't have a specific line item we take it out of. Right. We haven't, we haven't set up that yet, uh, the-
Create our own line item.
The capital project grant yet, because we haven't applied for the grant. But we will be, uh, very shortly.
Uh, so the way I understand it, then you'll set up a, a revenue account and a counter expenditure account?
And a receivable for that, and-
So it'll be a wash.
And we'll set, we'll start expending money against the capital grant. Yes, sir.
Further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Um, Madam Clerk, item ten, please.
Communication, request for water, Bakers Avenue and three through five Sugar Hollow Road.
What's your pleasure, Councilwoman Diggs?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make a referral to an ad hoc committee with Director of Public Works and a report from planning.
Motion's been made for an ad hoc committee. Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Seaberry, Councilman Curran, and Councilman Perkins. Uh, Madam Clerk, item eleven, please.
Resolution, Pocono Lane Traffic Improvement. Dear Mayor Bowden and common council members, for many years, residents in the Pocono Lane area complained about the difficulties they faced exiting Pocono Lane onto Newtown Road. The State of Connecticut Department of Transportation has determined that a traffic signal installation at the intersection of Pocono Lane and Newtown Road is not warranted. To improve the exiting of the Pocono Lane area onto Newtown Road by residents, it is proposed to construct a one-way roadway from Pocono Lane to Mountain View Road. Vehicles would then be able to exit the development by using the signalized intersection at Mountain View Road and Newtown Road. The proposed location of this one-way roadway is far enough from the intersection of Pocono Lane and Mountain View Road with Newtown Road to allow a safe left turn onto Mountain View Road. Another advantage of this layout is that there are no residents on Mountain View Road immediately across from the new road, who would be impacted by the headlights of vehicles using the new roadway. The construction of this one-way roadway requires the acquisition of the following two easements. Tax Assessor's Lot Number M-128, which is Pebble Mortgage LLC, five Mountain View Road, Permanent Roadway Easement, and Tax Assessor Lot, uh, Number M-128, Pebble Mortgage LLC, five Mountain View Road, Maintenance and Utility Easement. Enclosed, please find copies of the proposed easement map and of the legal descriptions for the proposed easements. We would appreciate if you would authorize the Corporation Counsel's office to take the steps necessary to acquire these easements. I have also enclosed my October twentieth, two thousand and six letter regarding this issue. If you have any questions, please give me a call. Very truly yours, Antonio Idarola, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, Councilman Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to take the necessary measures to acquire the aforementioned easements, which would, uh, move forward for the development of the said roadway.
Which were made and seconded by Councilman Shinise. Uh, is there any discussion about the proposal? Mr. Sadi, and then Mr. Rotella, and then-
Thank you, Your Honor. This is something that we've been working on in the fourth ward for, uh, many years with area residents, and unfortunately, and Councilman Esposito, I can attest to this, that unfortunately, the state hasn't stepped up to try to address this issue, and just basically denying, uh, recommendations or requests for a traffic signal, and not trying to come up with alternative proposals. However, it is very heartening to see the city stepping up, and I thank Mr. Idarola and the mayor for working with, uh, Mr. Michael and putting a proposal like this together. Uh, I've already had some comments from residents who are very happy to, uh, see that something like this is going forward. I know there's gonna be a process, and I presume in that process, residents can comment, and things may be adjusted. So I wanna thank, uh, the mayor's office and, uh, the Director of Public Works for putting this together. I did have one question with regard to the easement. The acquisitions are for, uh, five Mountain View Road, but the, um, the width of the road and the setbacks from the side that the city would necessarily have control over is necessary. Does that go over, I think, onto a piece of private property that's not included in this easement? Uh, and is there any physical disruption of any other pieces of property?
Idarola, you wanna? Yes, sir?
Councilman, I, um, if I can just ask you to repeat that question, I don't quite understand.
I, another council member showed me a copy of a map-
Yep.
-which looked like there was a residential house abutting the property that is referenced in the letter, and that the easements, not the road itself, but the side, the abutting easements, would cross into that property. I just wanted to know whether or not there'd be any physical disruption, or is that just simply the side road easements?
That, that is exactly what it is. The house will remain until the current owner decides to demolish it, or do whatever they need to do with it. We basically reserve ourselves a strip in the future if we need to, uh, put any type of u- We basically reserved ourselves a strip in the future if we need to put any type of utilities or do any type of road maintenance, we would have it in the future. So basically, it's a reservation strip.
And that's the same as throughout the city for any road?
That's correct, yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Rotella, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. Through the city engineer, actually, Antonio, Mr. Idarola will be fine. I'm just want to get into that question a little bit. I'm looking at the map right here, and the easement does go right through the house. It goes through 10 feet of the house, and the road itself abuts it. It actually touches the house. Is there someone living in that house, and has this person been contacted?
That, that, both those lots are owned by Mr. Michael. He owns the house.
Is he in it?
No.
Nobody's in the house. Okay, so it's unoccupied.
Yeah, Your Honor, if, if I could just explain, there are two very distinct easements. The first easement, which looks like it touches the house, it's actually six inches off the house, is the easement that will actually, will allow us to construct the 12-foot-wide one-way road. The easement that actually goes through the house is an easement that we will not have in fee. It would be an easement that we would reserve to be able to perform any type of road maintenance activity if we want to put any type of utilities within that area, should we have the opportunity to do that if the house is ever demolished. So we're basically reserving a right, if you will, in the future to possibly use that strip of land.
Sure, I understand that. So my question is, is someone in that house going to have traffic whizzing right underneath their bedroom window, or is the mayor's indicated, is the house unoccupied?
No, the house does have somebody living in it, and the owner will be dealing with the occupant of that home.
I see.
As far as notifying him of what's going on. There was even a discussion of relocating them, that individual that's living there. But, uh...
I understand, Mr. Idarola, that, that process was already underway.
Oh, okay, so he has started it.
That's why I mentioned to you that, but nonetheless, that'll be a challenge for the landlord to, to work with.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Now, I, I had an opportunity last year. I met with the 50s, 60s of people living in that neighborhood, which is why I'm fond of this whole thing, and I spoke to them about some of the concerns they had with the city, and the one that came ringing was the fact that they had such difficulty getting that neighborhood. And I also understand, as my colleague, Mr. Sadi, mentioned, that the state tried to do something about it, but they didn't even drop it. They kind of fell on deaf ears. With all of that said, I congratulate the mayor and the Director of Public Works, and I urge the full acceptance of this, this motion so it can go forward.
Seaberry, any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 12 through 15 was consent. Item 16, please.
Resolution, per capita grant additional funding to Honorable Mark De Bowden from Common Council, from David St. Hilaric, Director of Finance. Attached for your review is a resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Department of Health, Housing and Welfare to accept additional funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health for the per capita program. This additional allocation in the amount of $18,896.64 will increase the '07-'08 fiscal year funding from $75,491.43 to $94,388.07. The grant period is 7/1/07 through 6/30/08, and requires no local match. A revised budget is also attached. The Common Council is respectfully requested to consider this resolution at its next meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilman Saraceno?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we accept, receive the communication and approve a resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Department of Health, Housing and Welfare to accept additional funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health for the per capita program in the amount of $18,896.64.
This was made and seconded by Councilman Carvo. Any discussion about the per capita grant? Mrs. Taverzak?
Thank you, Your Honor. I did have a few questions if Mr. Leroy could respond to them. Thank you. And the first question, excuse my ignorance, but where is the department's Office of Community Medicine? I've never heard of it.
It's through the chair. It's a partnership with the hospital through the Seaford Clinic, next to Elmwood Hall.
Okay, thank you. The position that we received $8,000 for in the per capita grant, it looks, if you do the math, that that's only for 13 weeks. Is this an incumbent that's already in this position? Are you increasing the hours of this person? Is this not an employee of the Department of Health?
I can answer the question by this. It's, everything to do with that position is in partnership with the Danbury Hospital, and it's an agreement. We help fund a portion of that position to keep the administration going for our community health nurse. So the hospital pays a lot more than we do, but it's a cooperative effort because the hospital feels our services are necessary.
So this person is an employee of Danbury Hospital?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. And through you, Your Honor, the second item was hand tools for the Health Department, which was budgeted in our city budget for $350. This is $100. What, what is this for?
It's used as a reserve if, say, the septic guys break their transit, costs go up throughout the year, so I use it to cover anything that may be over and beyond what we already budgeted.
And through the chair, it looks as though there is funding in the amount of $7,549 for staff, salary, fringe benefits, utilities, and supplies for the city's homeless shelter. I'm a little confused about that funding. I, I know that we fund one position at the shelter. I know that DSS funds staffing for the shelter, but I believe in June, the shelter got a CDBG grant of $36,350 for staff for the shelter, including overtime, fringe benefits for full-time and temporary employees. So what does this $7,000, what is this for?
Well, I'd just call it additional funds. The CDBG grant did not cover, because of cost increases this year, all the costs associated with overtime and salary. It also covers a national cost that we don't foresee. Example, our staff broke their foot, and we needed to have people cover overtime. That's not necessarily budgeted in, and we have to find ways to cover it, and when we receive more money in per capita, I thought it was a wise decision.
And through the chair, final question. So you don't believe any of the per capita is, is being used to substitute for funds that have already been provided through our normal budgetary process?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Mrs. Taverzak, any further discussion about the per capita grant? Seeing none, then I'll try, seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 17, please.
Report, statement of condition and property from the Danbury Fire Department.
Mr. Cobham?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the report, as all members have copies, and that we receive the communication and accept the report as presented, take no action.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilwoman Teich Schultz. Is there any discussion under the statement of condition and property? Mr. Curran?
Yes, first, I'd like to, through the chair, to the chief, commend him on an excellent report on the, the condition of the fire department. I cannot speak as a longtime member of this council, because I just got appointed last month, but I can speak as a member of the Danbury Fire Department for 37 and a half years, having worked for seven administrations and seven different councils. And I will say that the fire department right now is in the greatest shape that it's ever been in, in the, in the last 37 and a half years that I know of. And this council deserves a lot of credit, and so does the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. Appreciate the positive comments. Further discussion under the statement of conditions? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on acceptance of the report. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 18, please.
Ad-hoc Report and Resolution, Administration of Military Leave.
It's Councilwoman Diggs.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ad hoc report, proposed ordinance, administration of military leave service, July 17, 2007. Honorable Mark De Bowden, Mayor, Common Council Members. Chairwoman N. Jane Diggs called a meeting to order at 7:00 PM. An attendance were committee members, Councilman John Esposito and Councilwoman Pauline Bassow, Diane Rosemar, Assistant Corporation Counsel, Virginia Alasko Werner, Director of Personnel, Mayor Mark Botten, and Thomas Sadi, ex-official member and petitioner and members of the public. Mrs. Diggs read the charge of the committee, which was to review the proposed ordinance. Mr. Sadi began by giving an overview of his request for the proposed ordinance. He indicated that current employees who have been deployed would be the, would be the beneficiaries of his proposed changes. Attorney Rosemar distributed copies of her spreadsheet she compiled comparing the current city policy, Mr. Sadi's proposal, and USARA's mandated benefits. She gave an overview of salary, health insurance, other benefits, and reinstatement, demonstrating that the city provides greater benefits than USARA requires and Mr. Sadi's proposal. Mayor Botten stated that the current city policy offers a richer benefit to deployed employees. An additional benefit provides holiday pay to employees deployed beyond 180 days. He cautioned that crafting an ordinance could open the doors to negotiations and collective bargaining. The mayor suggested extending the 180-day differential to one year as a thank you for their service and the drafting of a resolution to bring to the common council. Mr. Sadi concurred with Mayor Botten that the city offers a good policy, and a resolution seems like a good way to go for it with a small extension of, of differential. Mrs. Bassow and Mr. Esposito also concurred with the mayor's suggestion. Mrs. Alasko Werner advised that the personnel department would react and adjust as needed. Mrs. Bassow moved to change the existing city resolution to bring the city policy up to date with USARA with regards to salary and benefits, change the 100 days to one year, change the 30 days to 60 days, and take no action as fore as an ordinance go, and have this changed to a resolution. Seconded by Mr. Esposito, discussion followed, motion passed unanimously. Mrs. Bassow moved her adjourn at 7:17 PM. Motion seconded by Mr. Esposito. Motion passed unanimously. Respectfully submitted, N. Jane Diggs, Chairwoman John Esposito, and Pauline Bassow.
Thank you, Councilman. What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilman Basso?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee.
Second. And adopt the resolution.
And adopt the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Carvo. Discussion, Mr. Calendino?
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, many years ago, more than I care to remember, I was inducted into the United States Army. About 41 years, exactly. Up-chuckling town.
Just hard to imagine you in that position, but...
When I went in the Army, there really was nothing in place for us. We didn't know whether or not we'd have a job when we came back, that is if we came back, rather than assurances the city is giving to our men and women that do serve. And I really would like to commend Chairwoman Diggs, John Esposito, and Pauline Bassow for making a positive recommendation to this, this proposal. And I certainly would like to thank the mayor and all of the common council for the bilateral support that they've given us. I think it's a wonderful thing that we do for our men and women that serve. Thank you.
Mr. Calendino, Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Your Honor. As the petitioner originally on this, I thank the committee for working very cooperatively together with the mayor's office, and also as a petitioner, I agree with it being put forward as a resolution as opposed to an ordinance, given the problems of, of an ordinance and union contracts and other benefits. I would disagree with the report on one note, in that it states it's a small extension of a differential. I think it's a pretty big extension of the differential, and just so people are clear, that the 180 days to one year is to cover active duty time, and the 30 days is now 60 days of differential for training time, because no longer are reservists or National Guard personnel weekend warriors. Active duty deployments have been extended, and training has been significantly extended. So I'm, I certainly know that the council will support this, and I think it's a good proposal going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadi. Appreciate your comments. Further discussion, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for, for their comments. I also, regarding this resolution, it's a wonderful resolution, and I would like to thank Councilwoman Diggs as chair, Councilman Esposito, Councilman Basso. I would also, would like to thank for their wonderful efforts regarding this resolution, Councilman Sadi, and of course, our, our honorable Mark De Bowden as mayor. I too, when I deployed many, many years ago, as a young guy, your first consideration, even though you're most likely heading into a hostile world, your first consideration is what's, what is your family, and how is your family going to, to be while you're gone for a year, two years, whatever? So even though, you know, you think about yourself, but when you're young and whatever, you sort of worry more about your mom, your dad, and your family. So this resolution, it helps to alleviate some of the pressure on those city employees that might be called up and might be, be deployed into a hostile environment. So anytime that you can do something wonderful like this, we have to really thank everybody concerned for doing such a wonderful job. And, and again, I end up with saying that this is the City of Danbury's way of thanking all of our military personnel for what they give back to us and how they serve so wonderfully and heroically. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Riley, any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds in adopting the resolution. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Nice job on that, on a really very much a bipartisan basis. Good job, everybody. Item 20 was on consent. Oh, I stand corrected. Item 19, please.
Ad-hoc Report and Ordinance, Danbury Museum and Historical Society.
Pleasure, Counsel. Councilman Curran?
Okay, we'll waive the reading of the report as well. And, and refer to public hearing. Seeing no objection, then it is so ordered to a public hearing. Item 20 was on consent. Mr. Calendino's happy we got that issue resolved. Does he want to talk about that a little bit more?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
That's a long time coming. The members of our TV audience, you have no idea. Madam Clerk, item 21, please.
Ad-hoc Report, Estate of Harry Hunt.
Mr. Calendino?
I'm making a motion to waive the reading of this report, since we all have copies. Can I do that?
The motion's been made to waive the reading of the report, since we all have copies, seconded by Mr. Rotella. Would you like to adopt the recommendations in the report?
Yes.
Okay. So when I waive the reading of the report, adopt the recommendations, been seconded by Mr. Rotella. Is there any discussion about the report, about the issue? Mrs. Taverzak?
Thank you, Your Honor. A question through you, the Corporation Counsel. I'm concerned if we take no action, what actually happens is that these liens keep growing on this property of this estate, and there's no finality, there's no end to it. Is there some action that we could take that would result in the property being sold or foreclosed, and the liens being satisfied, and there not being this ongoing saga of an unbilledable lot, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Okay, Mr. Pinter?
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Taverzak, there, the, the reason for the action that the committee took and recommended to the council is that any delinquency, including this delinquency, will have... to the council is that any delinquency, including this delinquency, will have legal process and measures to satisfy it. There's nothing that you could do unless you are willing to authorize some specific legal process yourself, which you typically don't do, to collect this particular debt. So what will happen here is that at some point, this debt will have to be collected through the statutory process that we have for the collection of any assessment or other tax delinquency.
You, your honor, what is that? Mr. Pinter, I'm not a lawyer. If you could just shed a little light on it.
The tax collector will lien this, there'll be a collection action commenced, sheriff will serve, and eventually, there could be a legal action, including foreclosure, as a last resort.
Thank you.
Further discussion about the estate of Harry Hunt? Mr. Sadi.
Just for the record, just to note what the recommendation of the committee is, to take no action at this time on the request for, I guess, vitiation of these liens.
No vitiating tonight, that's correct. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Please record Mrs. Tabersek in the negative. Madam Clerk, item 22.
Ed Hackett Report, Noise Ordinance.
It's a pleasure, Count, Mr. Cavill.
Your honor, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the report and adopt the committee's recommendation.
Made and seconded by Mr. Riley to waive the reading of the report, adopt the recommendations of the committee. Is there any discussion about this particular report or recommendations? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 23, please.
Ed Hackett Report, Request for Sewer and Water Route 37 and Stacy Road.
Pleasure, counsel. Councilwoman Saraceno.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the report and approve the water and sewer petition as presented, subject to the standard eight steps.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilwoman Bassow, relating to the approval of the sewer and water petition. At this time, we also waived the reading of the report, so at this time, is there any discussion about this particular issue? Mrs. Tabersek.
Thank you, your honor. Through you a question. Has the project been approved? I know we're only approving this evening the extension of sewer.
See, Mr. Elfrin. The answer to your question, Mrs. Tabersek, is no, the project has not been approved.
Then, to you, your honor, I'm thinking of that property on Tamarack Road that belonged to Hank Blansfield, that sat there for a year with a big sign that said "For Sale" with approvals. If we approve this sewer connection and the project is somehow denied or rejected in planning, does the approval go away?
I don't believe the approval does, but let's not forget that there are other businesses and residents on the road that want sewer and water service, and it's also part of our sewer and water master plan in terms of where we plan to extend those services throughout the city. So certainly, the approval won't go to waste. We would use a different methodology, an assessment methodology, if the residents wanted to still go forward and receive sewer and water.
Just if you would clarify, your honor, if the project is rejected in planning, the approval still is valid.
That's correct. Yes. Any further discussion about... Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. It would be Councilwoman Tabersek in the negative. Madam Clerk, item 24, please. Oh, excuse me. Item 24 was on consent. 25 was on consent. Mr. President.
Your honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion, because of the executive session, that we move item number 29 ahead of item 26, which is the department reports.
Motion made and seconded by Councilwoman Saraceno. Any discussion under department reports? Mrs. Bassow. I assume we, I thought Mr. Cavill's motion. Actually, move it.
Move it.
Oh, I stand corrected. At this time, any discussion about moving the item above the executive session items? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Mr. President, department reports.
Your honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the departmental reports, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Riley. Is there any discussion under department reports? Mrs. Bassow.
Yes, your honor. This is to the police chief and to everybody that's here. I'd like to just say thank you. Two policemen, Linda Larenko and Charles Emick, I think that's how you pronounce it, they actually, on their day off, went up to Great Plains School. There was a handicapped group there, and they asked permission to use a patrol car to go up there with their uniforms on. They spoke with the class there. They showed the kids the police car. They handed them out badges, and I said, God bless them. They do this on their day off, and I want to thank you, chief, for allowing them to do this. This is absolutely wonderful. And, you know, we hear about all the bad things that happen in this town, but when something good like this happens, that they help these little kids, I mean, this is a fantastic thing. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mrs. Bassow. Further discussion on department reports. Mrs. Tabersek, and then Mr. Riley, then Mrs. Teich Schultz.
Thank you, your honor. I had a question for Mr. Myers on the Dream Homes report. The report shows in the HUD section that there were 25 new or initial homeless individuals presenting themselves. It also shows that 14 came to Dream Homes. I'm pretty sure those might be different ones, but the city shelter had 17 new assessments last month. So what I need to know is, do we have a single point of entry, or are we still working with this kind of trifurcated three-point-of-entry system?
Well, in regards to the numbers, I mean, those numbers are representative of all the agencies that enter into the HMIS system, not just the city shelter and Dream Homes.
So is there more than one point of entry?
No.
No, you only had 14 new cases?
For Dream Homes specifically?
Yes. That's what your report says. But HUD says that the city of Danbury had 25.
I would have to do some research and be able to get that...
That's in your report, Carl. Would you? Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? Now, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, your honor. At this time, I'd just like to commend Donald Malillo, if by any chance Donald is here. No, thank you. This gentleman was recognized as being one of the outstanding code inspectors for the city of Danbury. And by his outstanding dedication to the public and all those things that go along with keeping the health of our citizens of Danbury in a very positive mode, that is why the gentleman was recognized. So I want to thank that gentleman for his outstanding efforts regarding the city of Danbury. Thank you very much.
Sure, Mr. Lari and Mr. Antos will share those sentiments with Mr. Mallo. Well said, Mr. Riley. Mrs. Teich Schultz.
Thank you, your honor. I would also like to thank the police department again on their traffic enforcement. I've seen a huge increase in the past year in the enforcement out there, and thank you.
Mrs. Teich Schultz, Mr. Rotella.
Thanks, your honor. I'd like to commend the Department of Public Works, in particular, the forestry department under Mark Miller, for the work that they've done the last couple of months after the storms that we've had, getting the city back to normal. And also, this interesting private-public partnership with the planting of, the replacing of some of these trees with the test of the American elm. I wish you great success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rotella. Well said. Councilwoman Bassow, last time for you.
I don't think so. I want to, you know, I forgot. Today, I went on the computer, and I looked up what the unit had just done. They closed down a vegetable place, I believe, on Aug. 19th Street. They get this manhead, no license, nothing. I mean, it was just unbelievable. And I read all the other report, and I'll tell you, your unit is doing a phenomenal job, that you and the guys and Jim, all, everybody is doing such a fantastic job. I mean, everybody. I mean, when I read these reports and I see how, what you have to go through, it's a lot of work, and I think you're doing a fantastic job. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Bassow. Anybody down this, Mr. Sadi?
Change the atmosphere a little bit and criticize somebody for a change tonight. I'm just kidding, your honor. Thank you.
Anything for us on Mr. Sadi here? Anybody down the other? Anybody want to complain down on that end? Okay, we're all good then? Okay. All in favor, acceptance of the department reports, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. This time, we're going to break for executive session. We're going to ask for a quick five minutes to clear the room. I'm going to ask Mr. Ayer DeRola to join us, along with Mr. Saint-Hilaire, the rest of department heads. At this time, I don't think we'll need anybody else. You're free to go. And we will convene back in regular session to make decisions on the executive session. Please don't get lost, because we've got about five minutes. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are back in regular session. We appreciate your patience. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Cavill. We are on item 26 of our executive session. That was the city of Danbury versus Sannieck. Mr. Cavill.
Your honor, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor, acting on behalf of the city of Danbury, to transfer any quitclaim interest the city may now or in the past have had in the property at Fort Bell's Lane to the estate of Sannieck, as proposed by the council, subject to planning commission approval and execution of such court and other documentation as may be required to accomplish that goal.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Sheehan Eces. Any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Cavill, item 27.
Thank you, your honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed settlement of litigation and property acquisition related to the proposed new police station at East Franklin and Maple, in accordance with the recommendation of Corporation Counsel, subject to the certification of funding and any necessary court approval and document execution.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Riley. Any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Cavill, item 28.
Thank you, your honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Mayor Mark DeBouton, on behalf of the city of Danbury, to conduct and conclude negotiations towards the acquisition of land on New Street, subject to planning commission approval, certification of funding, using the figure as the city's appraisal plus 10 percent.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Councilman Trombetta. Any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Just a couple of quick things before we break. I neglected to mention that Jane and Leroy Diggs had their 38th wedding anniversary on August 1st or 2nd? August 2nd, congratulations. Councilwoman McMahon and Councilman, excuse me, Councilwoman McMahon had her, Councilwoman McMahon and Mr. McMahon had their 40th wedding anniversary on August 5th. Councilman Perkins is not with us tonight, but it is his birthday on August 21st. Let's all send him a nice card. Councilman Sheehan Eces has a birthday on August 28th. Congratulations, Ben. Just a couple of quick things I want to mention as far as announcements. August 18th to 19th is St. Anthony's Lebanese Festival. That's the Majoran, which is on 17 Granville Avenue, 12 noon to 12 midnight. Come on down, have a great time at that. Sorry if I said that wrong time. August 9th, we are planting that tree in front of the Future Veterans Building, which is at Rogers Park, the new white building that we just purchased, so if you want to come down and join us for that. We are having a flag raising ceremony. Mr. Negash had made me promise to mention that for India's Independence Day. That'll be at 11:30 on the 19th here at City Hall. Love to see everybody stop by and see that again. Chuck with Wendy in my office for any other events that you might want to go to, and best times. I will also extend all committees at this time, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Sadi, seconded by Mr. Riley. All in favor of German, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.